Good evening. The council meeting of January 21st will come to order. We'd ask all in attendance, turn off our silent electronic devices and if you'd please stand to honor God and country. Father God, these are unsettled days and unsettling times. So this week, as we remember the work and the legacy of Martin Luther King Jr., let us pray that we can continue to lead in the direction of God's kingdom. We pray that we remember who we are, whose we are, and especially who we are called to be. Thank you, God, for gathering this body together to do your will. May we prove faithful. We pray for our witness and work. We pray for the strength, hope, and courage of those in this room. May our commitment and actions prove to be strength, hope, and courage for others. Amen. Hand to heart, as we pledge our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Persons wishing to be heard on items that are not on the agenda, there are forms available in the back of the room and may be turned in the clerk to your right. At this time, I would ask that Brooks D. Bartolo Principal Christine Bennett, Focus Academy Principal Elizabeth Kraft, Greco Middle School Principal Mr. Olson, and Guidance Counselor for Lewis Amanda Leonard, if you'd please approach the podium. And as our principals and guidance counselors are coming forward, National School Choice Week was promoted to raise awareness among parents of the public and non-public K through 12 education options available to their children. In 2017, more than 720 mayors and county leaders, along with 32 governors, the unanimous United States Senate, and the president issued a proclamation recognizing National School Choice Week. So this week, in the city of Temple Terrace, a proclamation. Whereas all children in Temple Terrace should have access to the highest quality education possible, Temple Terrace recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Temple Terrace to be successful adults, and quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Temple Terrace. And whereas Temple Terrace is home to a multitude of high-quality public and nonpublic schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home, and whereas Temple Terrace has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now therefore, I, Mal Herado, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Temple Terrace, do hereby proclaim January 26th through February 1st as Temple Terrace School Choice Week. I'd ask Principal Bennett, Ms. Leonard, Principal Kraft, or Principal Olson, if you have anything to say.
Well, I'd just like to say, as a proud resident of Temple Terrace, that it's great to live in a city that recognizes school choice and also supports education in so many ways.
The sole applicant is Alan Grier. I would ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Alan Grier to the municipal
Mayor, with your education committees that meet on a regular basis and allows us to come
code enforcement board for a term extending from January 21, 2020 until January 21, 2023.
together and collaborate, and I think we have the best schools in the area. So thank you, council, and thank you to the city for recognizing choice, which is important
Is there a motion?
Move to approve Alan Grier to the code.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
in education.
All in favor, please signify with aye. Thank you.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign.
On behalf of Lewis Elementary, I'm happy to be here as a professional and as a resident.
Thank you, the motion carries. Thank you. I don't see Mr. Grier here tonight, but thank you for your willingness to serve our community.
And currently at Lewis, we have 230 students who choiced into Lewis Elementary.
Council, if the minutes of the January 7th, 2020 city council meeting are acceptable,
And again, as a resident, I chose to have my students go to this school as well.
would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of the January 7th meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for your constant support and I'm just happy to be
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any corrections?
here and serve the Greco Temple Terrace community.
All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed, nay sign. You're welcome. Thank you. Motion carries. Persons wishing to be heard on items that are not on the agenda, a three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. As speakers come to the podium, if you would please state your name and your city of residence. During public comment on items that are not on the agenda, our city manager and directors who are in the audience do make note of these items, and any of those items related to city business will be followed up on.
Let's do that again.
Have one form this evening from Mr. Charles Loeb.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I did want to let you sort of make a presentation to you. The reason is that back over on Friday, I went over to FDOT on some other business, and I happened to have the MPO people happen to drop off a calendar. When I happened to look at it, I got a real surprising at you folks in the bike, in the race or the ride with mayor, bike event was really well, very well pictured. I did go over there today on other business, and I decided to check and see if I can get a second calendar for you all, because you all do not have it yet. I saw your 2019 calendar from the MPO, but not the 2021. Unfortunately, we cannot get this on. I'd love you people to see it, has your logo on it and everything like that. But what I can do before presenting, after I find out to whom did I present it to, is to read to you what is actually said on the bottom about Temple Terrace. And it says, "A city with choices." Temple Terrace celebrated Bike Florida Bike Month last year on the six-annual ride with the mayor event above, co-sponsored by Bike Walk Tampa Bay, the ride around the river, historic homes, and Florida College. To provide wide varieties of ways to get around, the city continues improving sidewalks and crosswalks, and they also have a little insert of the Panacrosswalk that you did on the end. And it was also asked the MPO to study golf cart routes. The MPO study wrapped up later in 2019 and focused on getting golf carts safely across the major roads such as Fowler Avenue and 56th Street, connecting neighborhoods to groceries and parks. And as a person that crosses 56th and Fowler a lot, I would say, they have their work cut out, so do you all. And anyway, I did want to present this to the proper party. I do want you to use it for your publicity. I think it would be good for your publicity over the next couple of months for the bike, for the ride with the mayor bicycle. So I should give it to the mayor, the clerk, or whomout, or the city manager.
You can share it with the clerk. Thank you, Mr. Loeb.
That's all. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address council this evening on items that are not on the agenda? Seeing no one, we will move forward to item 6A, MCEB, a lien reduction petition for 6703 East 113th Avenue. Municipal Code Enforcement Board Chair David Pogoralek will present the case.
Thank you. David Pogoralek, Chairman of Code Enforcement Board. Madam Mayor, council members, this first one is being brought to you tonight for 6703 East 113th Avenue. These fines started accruing back in 2017. If you read the minutes attached, you'll see that there are some quite extenuating circumstances surrounding this event. At the December 11th, 2019 Municipal Code Enforcement Board, it was unanimously decided to recommend to the council that a fine that had accrued to $2,300 be reduced to $230, contingent upon it being paid within 30 days. And that was, again, a unanimous vote, and we're simply asking for you to agree to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I would ask staff if they have any additional comments on this item. Thank you. Are the property owners or representatives present this evening?
I don't see them.
No.
Okay. Are there any members of the public that would like to address council on this item? If council determines that the lien reduction is appropriate, we call for a motion to approve a lien reduction in case 17-3282, City versus Patrick Bernard King, Jaclyn King-Roo, Joseph King, Paul Charles King, and Carmel Marie King, for the property located at 6703 East 113th Avenue. Is there a motion?
Move to accept the recommendation of the code board and reduce the lien on the said property from $2,300 to $230, continued upon receipt of payment within 30 days of tonight, where it reverts back to the original $2,300.
Thank you, Councilman Ross. Is there a second?
A second, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Item 6B, Municipal Code Enforcement Board, lien reduction petition for 708 Grand Circle. Again, Chair David Pogoralek will present.
Thank you. David Pogoralek, Chairman of Code Enforcement Board. Council, the second lien reduction hearing, actually, the beginnings of it date back about 15 years. The amount of the fine on this particular property had accrued to $414,500. At the January 8, 2020 Municipal Code Enforcement Meeting, the respondent appeared with a buyer for her house, and the city manager was kind enough to get this particular address on your agenda for tonight, even though the meeting was on January 8th. We do, there is, like I said, there is a buyer, there's an imminent closing. We had, we recommend to council that the $414,500 fine be reduced to $24,750. I'm sorry, to, wait a minute, let me find it. $19,750. And I realize that's a great reduction, but we do have a sale contingent on this particular reduction. All parties involved are in favor of it, and it was unanimous decision by the code enforcement board.
Thank you. I'd once again ask if staff has any additional comments?
No.
Is the property owner or representative present this evening?
No.
Is there any member of the public that would like to address council on this item? Seeing none, if council determines that a lien reduction is appropriate, we call for a motion to approve a lien reduction in cases 05-0557 and 12-0694, City versus Vernika L. and Jeffrey L. Rhodes, for the property located at 708 Grand Circle. Is there a motion?
Move to accept the code board's recommendation of lien reduction on the case number 050557 and 12-0694, reducing it to $19,750, provided it's paid within 30 days of tonight, otherwise reverts back to the full amount.
Thank you, Councilman Chisler.
Second.
Is there, there is a second? Any discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Pogoralek. The public hearing and second reading of ordinance 1487, amending Chapter 2 of the code firefighter pensions and retirement, is now open. Assistant Fire Chief Shane Salmon will provide a brief explanation.
Shane Salmon, Assistant Fire Chief, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm here to present the second reading of the ordinance 1487, amending Chapter 2 of the code firefighter pension and retirement, as discussed during the last meeting. I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any further questions about it, and I'll stand.
I would first ask if there is anyone from the public that would like to address council on this item? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Council questions? Seeing no questions, we'd ask the clerk to please read title of ordinance 1487.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending Chapter 2, Administration and Elections, Article 3, Officers and Employees, Division 3, Pensions and Retirement, Subdivision 4, Firefighters of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Temple Terrace, amending Section 2-205, Deferred Retirement Options Program, Drop, Providing for Severability of Provisions, Providing for Codification, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict Herewith, and Providing an Effective Date.
If the ordinance is acceptable, would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1487, amending Chapter 2 of the code firefighter pensions and retirement. Is there a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 1487.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, council? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 8B, a resolution approving the Public Emergency Medical Transportation Letter of Agreement. Fire Captain Joe Cable, our training officer, and Finance Director Lynn Boswell will explain.
This particular letter of agreement will help the fire department definitely, especially in the EMS area, in which we transport Medicaid managed fee. And what we get back from the state or the feds is at least maybe 40% of what it actually costs to transport them. It's just revenue lost. We have a program currently in place, which is called the P E M T, which Temple Terrace has been doing for the past two years. This is our third year. The only ones who can apply for this are those who've been doing the P E M T, so I'm glad we've been doing this. This is a different program than the P E M T. The P E M T is not the Managed Care Program. It is a different program, so it has a different audience. We do the report to try to get back what we can, and of course, that again is even lower than the 40% I just mentioned to you before. This is a new program that the fire chiefs have come up with in agreement with AHCA to help a little bit with this cost. The only way this works is through the intergovernmental transfers, which is what you have before you there, an agreement that if we do the intergovernmental transfers, they take the pot of all the intergovernmental transfers from the state, all the participating agencies, and then we get back the 160% or the 88,000. Now, this is going to vary year to year, is going to vary depending on our transport. And it's not too complicated, but Joe has been in all of the meetings, and so he could speak to some of the details, and I can speak to some of the financial pieces of it, if you have any questions at all.
I would ask if there are any members of the public that would like to address council on this item? Seeing none, I would ask council, questions? Councilman Ross.
So I, I think I understand this a little bit, but I'm not sure. I called Mr. Stevenson earlier and asked him if he could explain it, and it was helpful. But I'm still a little confused as to, I mean, I'm not, it sounds good, it sounds, I mean, I'm not objecting to it, but why do we have to pay in $33,037 in order to, why are we paying in in order to get back?
The $83,000?
Yeah.
The reason why we're paying in is because we're pooling that amount, which the feds will more than match, as long as we have the pooled amount. The, like I said, they, if they decide that they want to lower what they want to fund, it's going to lower also our contributions. So what you have here is an estimate. We haven't been asked. And whatever we do give, though, let's say it's less, this year, it's as far as it's going to go, the $33,000, it's just based on historical. And once that is pooled together, and it works just like a pool, in which you put your money in, the feds are able to go ahead and contribute more because they're saying, okay, you've made this commitment, now we're going to make this commitment to you, that we're going to go ahead and fund this more than...
But the, so my, thank you, but my question, I guess, is how does that $33,037, how was that figure arrived on? Is that how much revenue that we've taken in from transports? Is that, so where did that number come from?
That number came from all of the chiefs in Florida that were going to participate in this, and I believe you have that attachment list of that spreadsheet. And all of those, all of those different agencies have differing amounts, depending on what the number of transports are historically off of the P E M T, because I do have to report that every year, even the managed care piece.
So it's based on the number of transports?
It is, it is based on what we do.
That's, okay, that's what I was trying to get at.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Chisler.
So we're going to pool this with everybody else, okay? And how much have we had to write off, or how much do we lose in a given time period? In a budget year?
I don't have those amounts with me right now. I apologize, I should have gotten that for you. I could probably pull that amount, because I just completed the P E M T to be submitted not too long ago, I think it was due November 30th. 40% of maybe 500, we lose 60% of that easily, so we're losing about maybe $300 of that for each and every transport.
Okay, so then the pool's going to work, we kick in, all the other municipalities in the state and so forth all kick in, and they get a pool of, I don't know, $2 million, whatever it be, and then the feds will come back with $3 million on top of that?
That is correct.
Okay, they'll match it to 40%.
That is correct, the more than match, or else we wouldn't do it.
So who's, who's, who runs the pool? Is the state running the pool? Is the pool running the pool, or?
The, we would provide the payments to the AHCA. Then with all the payments, they provide that in a bucket to the feds. The feds then go ahead and match that, more than match that, with their commitment, and then it gets redistributed back to Temple Terrace. And last time we got a P E M T payment, it came from Humana. There's another agency that'll go ahead and distribute, so it's not going to come directly from AHCA. It has to come through someone who's already taking Medicaid payments, and it would most likely come from Humana. I believe that's where the P E M T came from last year. So it's passing through, but not directly back from AHCA. It's coming through a different agency.
And it'll be based upon our claims that we filed?
That is absolutely correct.
And what's our timeframe for the payback? For reimbursement?
The payback, I don't imagine us even paying at all. They may, and we have this agreement that says back in October, but not until we give them report, and not until they ask for it. So I don't know what that timeframe will be. It needs to be before the expiration of this, which I believe is June of 2020. And I would presume that the timeframe turnaround, and that's one of the things that I asked them, would hopefully be around 45 days, because it shouldn't be very long. We have to do the reporting every single time they ask for it, whether it's quarterly, biannual, however they want to do that.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yeah, if I can just kind of clarify something here. It sounds too good to be true, which is exactly, exactly what I said when they brought it to me. After explaining the program and understanding that the federal money, we're not entitled to any federal reimbursement unless we're in the state pool. So we have to, we have to get in with the state in order to be eligible for federal funds, so.
To follow up on that, my only concern is that we have to deal with the state, that's one thing, but to deal with the feds, that just complicates everything, and more time goes past and it gets lost in the woodwork. Okay, thank you.
Any other, any other comments or questions? If acceptable, would entertain a motion allowing for participation in the intergovernmental transfers with the State of Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration and Supplemental Payment Program for Medicaid Managed Care patients. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. A resolution to adopt SPR 19-03 Final Site Plan for downtown Temple Terrace Block 1, lots 1 through 18, located on the southeast corner of North 56th Street and Bullard Parkway. Planner Celeste Lau will explain.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. If we could pull up the presentation. There it is. Okay. So the item I am presenting tonight is SPR 19-03, which is a final site plan for a site located within downtown Temple Terrace. A little background on the site, the subject property is located on the southeast corner of North 56th Street and Bullard Parkway. It is within the community redevelopment area as well as the downtown overlay district. It's currently vacant with one vacant building and paved asphalt. The site currently has a commercial general zoning, and the proposed use for the site is five buildings of mixed retail and office, which, all of which are allowed within the commercial general zoning. And the site's approximate size is 2.6 acres. Here are some photos of the existing conditions on the site. So this first photo shows, the photo shows the property looking south from Bullard Parkway. This photo shows the site looking southeast onto the subject property from 56th Street. Both these photos show that one vacant building on the site. This next photo shows, it's a view looking east onto the property. And this photo shows looking at the subject property from the, from a north direction from B Street. And this last photo shows the site from a northwest view, looking from Main Street. So the site plan was kind of large, and I didn't want to lose any detail, so it's split up in two portions. So this first slide shows the upper portion of the site plan. You can see the roadways that surround the subject property with North 56th to the west, Bullard Parkway to the north, and Main Street to the east. That blue circle at that corner intersection there is where the proposed fountain feature is going to go. And the three orange portions of the site plan show the proposed buildings, with Building E on Bullard Parkway, the proposed Chase Building, south of the fountain feature, and Building B, south of the proposed Chase Building. The purple that you see on the site plan show the proposed sidewalks and walkways within the site. And this is the lower portion of the site plan, with the remaining two buildings, Building C, which is that top one, and then Building D, where the proposed Starbucks is going to go. Again, you see North 56th Street, as well as Main Street, but now you'll see B Street from the south. And again, the purple shows the proposed sidewalks and walkways within the site. Here are the building elevations for Building B, which is the one south of the proposed Chase Building. The top photo shows the west elevation, which faces 56th Street, and the bottom photo shows the south elevation, which faces Building C. Again, here are the elevations for Building C. The top photo shows the west elevation facing North 56th Street, and the south elevation facing Building D. Here are the elevations for Building D. The top photo again shows the west elevation facing North 56th Street, and the south elevation facing B Street. With the south elevation, you'll also see where the proposed drive-through window is going to be. And Building E, which is the building located on Bullard Parkway, the top elevation shows the west elevation, which faces the proposed fountain feature, and the south elevation shows the portion of the building that faces the parking lot. And again, these are building elevations for Building G. The top one is the east elevation, which faces the future apartments, and the bottom picture shows the north elevation, which faces Bullard Parkway. And here are the Chase Building elevations, with the south elevation facing Building B, the north elevation facing the fountain feature, the west elevation facing North 56th Street, and the east elevation facing the parking lot. With this site plan, the applicant is requesting three waivers from the city of Temple Terrace Land Development Code. The first waiver is a waiver from Section 12-830, Sub Number 2, to allow for a 1.5 minimum footcandle for high-activity areas, and to allow... facing North Fifty-Sixth Street, and the south elevation facing Building D. Here are the elevations for Building D. The top photo, again, shows the west elevation facing North Fifty-Sixth Street, and the south elevation facing B Street. With the south elevation, you'll also see where the proposed drive-through window is going to And Building E, which is the building located on Bullard Parkway, the top elevation shows the west elevation, which faces the proposed fountain feature, and the south elevation shows the portion of the building that faces the parking lot. And again, these are building elevations for Building E. The top one is the east elevation, which faces the future apartments, and the bottom picture shows the north elevation, which faces Bullard Parkway. And here are the Chase Building elevations, with the south elevation facing Building B, the north elevation facing the fountain feature, the west elevation facing North Fifty-Sixth Street, and the east elevation facing the parking lot. With this site plan, the applicant is requesting three waivers from the City of Temple Terrace Land Development Code. The first waiver is a waiver from Section twelve dash eight thirty, sub number two, to allow for a one point five minimum foot candle for high activity areas, and to allow them to use the Florida statute ATM lighting requirements. The second waiver is from Section twelve dash two ninety-six, to allow for the proposed lighting to match the design and height of the existing light poles on site. And the third waiver is from Section twelve dash three zero five, sub letter A, sub number one, which requires fifty percent window or transparency at the pedestrian level. And the three buildings that they are requesting this waiver from is Building B, which is requesting thirty-five percent, Building C, thirty-two percent, and Building E, forty-one percent. And the remaining slides show the glazing calculations that were provided to staff from the architect. The blue shows where the proposed glass glazing, faux glazing is going to be. The top photo shows Building B's west elevation, which again faces Fifty-Sixth Street. That one requests, is requesting thirty-five percent glazing, as opposed to the fifty percent. The bottom elevation is showing Building C's west elevation, which again faces North Fifty-Sixth Street. They are requesting thirty-two percent glazing for that. And this is the north elevation for Building E, which is the one along Bullard Parkway. They are requesting forty-one percent. And with that, staff recommends counsel to approve the resolution for final site plan SPR nineteen dash zero three, subject to the requested waivers. That concludes staff presentation. I am here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Lau. And prior to counsel questions, I would ask if there are members of the public wishing to address counsel on this item. Would like to say good evening to Mr. Moon and company. We are, we are happy to have you with us this evening. And at this time, I'll ask counsel, are there any questions? Seeing no questions, if acceptable, would entertain a motion approving SPR nineteen dash zero three final site plan for downtown Temple Terrace Blocks, Block One, lots one through eighteen, located on the southeast corner of North Fifty-Sixth Street and Bullard Parkway. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move staff recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, counsel? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Welcome to Temple Terrace. We are looking forward to the groundbreaking.
Thank you.
Next, a resolution to accept and authorize the expenditure of Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant J. Grant Funds. Deputy Police Chief Bernie Sealy will explain.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Bernie Sealy, you're Deputy Chief of Police. We are requesting the approval of the acceptance in the expenditure of five thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars awarded to the city under the 2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Direct. During fiscal year nineteen, the police department utilized JAG funds to acquire personal protective equipment for use during simulated training. Following the joint police department, fire department active shooter training last year, we realized the need for additional helmets to protect our officers and allow more of the officers to participate at a time during the scenario-based training, as we move forward with additional training. As we continue to evaluate and refine our deployment and tactics, and the operational needs, as these threats unfortunately continue to evolve, the police department has further identified the need for additional ballistic shields and convex mirrors to assist and protect our officers in responding to these types of mass murder events. These are non-matching funds, and if approved, we intend to purchase two ballistic shields, two convex mirrors, and an additional ten protective helmets with face shields. I stand for questions.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. I would ask if there are members of the public that would like to address counsel on this item. Seeing none, counsel questions? Seeing none, if acceptable, would entertain a motion authorizing the acceptance in expenditure of five thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars awarded to the city under the 2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Direct. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution as described.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Next, a resolution to approve agreement with medical director. Assistant Fire Chief Salmon will explain.
Shane Salmon, Assistant Fire Chief, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm here to present a resolution approving a two-year contract agreement with the medical director. Under Section four oh one point two six five of the Florida statute, requires all advanced life support providers to have a current contract with a licensed medical director. Dr. Shepherd has begun providing services to the fire department as our medical director in 2012. Dr. Shepherd provides necessary training, education, and medical direction. The fire department requires to maintain the high-quality medical services we currently provide. Dr. Shepherd consistently meets or exceeds what is expected of her by her agency. The proposed contract language is consistent as in the previous two-year agreement. Other than providing an increase in salary of five percent on October first of 2020, this increase would bring her annual salary to thirty-three thousand and seventy-five dollars. The funds for this increase will be submitted in the proposed fiscal budget 2020 slash 2021. So it is the recommendation of, is recommended that City Council approve the two-year agreement between Brooke M. Shepherd, M.D., and the City of Temple Terrace for the provision of medical director services in accordance with Florida State Statute four oh one dot two six five. I'll stand for questions or comments if you have any.
Thank you. And I would first ask if there are any members of the public wishing to address counsel on this item. Seeing none, counsel questions? Seeing none, if acceptable, would entertain a motion approving the agreement with the medical director. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel.
Next, a resolution approving the name of Bertha Palmer Boulevard for a street in the CRA. City Manager Stevenson will explain.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's a resolution before you this evening to officially name what we know as Main Street down in our CRA district, Bertha Palmer Boulevard. I think there was, we discussed this, and there seemed to be a general consensus from council at our December seventeenth meeting. At that point in time, there was some indication that we couldn't use Boulevard for the sectional road. Staff has been rather convincing to the county to let us use Boulevard. So I think it has a, I think, a little bit better ring than street. So with that, and we've checked with them, that they've reserved that name for us, and are anticipating us getting back with them. Before, here's a resolution tonight to officially rename that road, that segment of road to Bertha Palmer Boulevard.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, counsel, any questions? Seeing no questions, if acceptable, would entertain a motion approving the name Bertha Palmer Boulevard for our street in the CRA.
Move to approve the resolution as described.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Counsel business. Is there any carryover business from our previous meeting, counsel? Seeing none, is there any new business? City manager report, Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just really have just three quick things to, to let counsel and the public know. We have been, I know our finance department has been working very diligently to get our FEMA reimbursement from Hurricane Irma. We had gotten word last week that our reimbursement is awaiting a check to the tune of just shy of eight-hundred thousand dollars. So we're certainly pleased with that, and quite honestly, two years seems like a lot of time, but it really isn't with these type of reimbursements. But I know that the finance department's been working very hard to kind of stay on top of that and get that done. So just to let you know that. We do have the accreditation assessors on site. If you guys are in, certainly in the building, Police Chief Bono would certainly be more than happy to introduce you to them. I think the schedule is for them to kind of conclude things Thursday, if I'm not mistaken, around lunchtime. And if you're, you're more than welcome to come by and meet those three fine gentlemen that run our, run our department through a rigorous exercise. But again, this is a mock assessment. So I had a chance to meet with them this morning, and they're real pleasant to deal with and to speak with. Third on the list is just a reminder that we have our coyote outreach, public outreach being conducted here this Thursday, the twenty-third, seven p.m. to eight-thirty or nine o'clock at Lightfoot Center. Certainly look forward to having all you guys come out. We had a briefing today with Fish and Wildlife Commission, and certainly their program that they're putting together. It appears as if they've got a lot of good information. I know that this is a topic of discussion, not only here in Temple Terrace, but certainly around the state, of how to deal with coyotes. And I think, I think it'll be a lot of good information that we can share with the public. So we look forward to seeing everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Boswell, for your work with the FEMA reimbursement. Thank you, Chief, for your work with accreditation. And we will go to City Attorney Report, Ms. Shashan.
I have nothing to report this evening.
That's probably a good thing. Is there any further business to come before counsel? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all.